I would like to request a roll call vote please.
So, I think we need to clarify what is being moved to, how's it going.
Oh, I asked to move number 13 to section 3B.
Section what?
3B, or 4C, it really doesn't matter as well, either of them sounds appropriate. Okay, well then I'll go with section 4C, under presentation 4C.
What's going to be for C?
I'd like to ask a question, if you need a motion to apply for a working session forward or this particular area.
I wasn't necessarily thinking about going forward, I guess perhaps after we make this motion, we could address it, you know, at the agenda setting at other times. I'm just requesting specifically for this.
So, just for this meeting, is there a reason why this meeting and not the rest of the meeting?
Well, in that case, then I would say for the rest of our work sessions, our committee meetings, I would say. And I believe it's important that the board will have the opportunity to address the public prior to the very end of the meeting. So, sure, by all means.
Let me ask you a question, maybe I can do this. I could do this before we make the motion for the agenda. She needs to speak.
There's a motion on the table.
That's why she made the move, because she wants to speak.
There's a motion on the table that has been moved.
No, I, I.
It seems to me that this board in the past, we have board comments earlier in the agenda, it's right around where we are right now, under two. So, I'm looking at the board's secondary, does it make sense to do it now?
Yeah, was there a reason why we moved it from where it used to be to the work session, we moved it to the work session?
Yeah, I believe that would get to respond dynamically to public comments. That's your opinion, so we would essentially become fact of the paradigm that we had previously discussed.
Thanks for clarifying, you're 100% right. The reason we moved it, because at this session, the public can speak on any committees that we bring before them. They don't have to sign up, they can talk, they can ask questions, we can interact with them. And we move the board comments to the very end, because we have time to speak.
So then I'll rephrase my motion, and the motion does stand to amend the agenda, moving line item number 13, board comment, to section 3B, which would be pretty much the earliest portion that we would have.
I'll tell you what I do, since I have the right to let you speak anytime during this thing, if that's the case. We don't have to move it, you can speak when we finish with the presentations. That's what you want, we don't have to move this. We don't have to make a motion to move the agenda just for one night, if you want to speak on it.
There's a motion for it's been seconded, so I should withdraw the motion.
Smart withdrawal?
I have not.
Okay, all right. And then move in second, and any discussion?
No, Mr. Jackson.
Who's seconding?
Kay Jackson.
All right, so, roll call.
Motion to amend the agenda and move board comments to section 3B. Mr. Steve Johnson?
Aye.
What did you say?
Yes.
Hey, Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Henner?
Yes.
Dr. Marino?
Yes.
The votes?
Yes.
Ms. Hatcher?
Yes.
Ms. Lomel?
Yes.
Mr. Robb?
Yes.
Chief Dax?
He's going where?
3B.
Overhand, did anybody sign up?
Public comment statement. The board provides for an opportunity to hear from the public. During this section of the meeting, any district resident or taxpayer may address the board on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. The purpose of this section of the meeting is to be heard, and as such, the board will not engage in a dialogue, but will listen to your concerns.
We'll be pleased to rise for a moment of silence and a pledge.
My present is to require the United States of America, through the Republic of Canada, to change my position in my regard to the universal, representative, constitutional right.
All members are present? But an executive session, last thing, we had executive session on nine twenty-two, discuss personnel matters, executive session tonight with student matters, contract, and that's it? So. First up, approve the agenda. Did I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to amend the agenda?
I'm second. What's your motion?
The motion to amend the agenda is to move item number thirteen, board comments, to either section three B, under hearing of the public, or section four C, special guest presentations, after having pantry and celebrating things, that we would move it up in the agenda because this is our long working meeting, our committee meetings, and our sessions are generally longer, and like for the boards having the opportunity to be heard before the public. Our kids go home at night, and we don't want to have you here until midnight, so we'd like to be able to greet our public prior to the very end of the meeting.
Over to second. Discussion, any discussion?
I'd like to request a roll call vote, please. So, I think we need to clarify what it's being moved to, how's it going?
Oh, I asked to move number thirteen to section three B.
Section what?
Three B, or four C, it really doesn't matter as well, either of them, and the more appropriate. Okay, well then I'll, I'll go with section four C, under presentation four C.
What's going to be four C?
Not much, I'd like to say question, if you need a motion to apply for a working session forward or this particular.
Um, I wasn't necessarily thinking about going forward, I guess perhaps after we make this motion, we could address it, you know, at, at the agenda setting at other times. I'm just requesting specifically for this.
So, just for this meeting, is there a reason why this meeting and not the rest of the meeting?
Well, and that's, and I'll say for this, for the rest of our, our work sessions, our committee meetings, I would say, and I believe it's important that the board would have the opportunity to address the public prior to the very end of the meeting, so sure, by all means.
Let me ask you a question, maybe I can do this. I could do this before we make the motion for the agenda.
There's a motion on the table.
That's why she made the move, because she wants to speak.
There's a motion on the table that has been moved. That's a motion, okay, that's appropriate. It seems to me that this board, in the past, we have board comments earlier in the agenda, it's right around where we are right now, under two, so I'm looking at the board's secretary area, does it make sense to do it now?
Yeah, is there, was there a reason why we moved it from where it used to be to, to the work session? We moved it to the work session? Yeah, I believe that would respond dynamically to public comments.
That's your opinion. So we essentially become fact of the paradigm that we had previously discussed.
Thanks for clarifying, you, you, you one hundred percent right. The reason we moved it, because at this session, the public can speak on any committees that we bring before them, they don't have to sign up, they can talk, they can ask questions, we can interact with them, and we move the board comments to the very end, because we have time to speak.
So then I, I'll rephrase my motion, and the motion does stand to amend the agenda, moving line item number thirteen, board comment, to section three B, which would be pretty much the earliest portion that we would have.
I'll tell you what I do, since I, I have the, I have the right to let you speak anytime during this thing, if that's the case, we don't have to move it. You can speak when we're finished with the presentations, that's what you, we don't have to move this. We don't have to make a motion and move the agenda just for one night, if you want to speak on it.
There's a motion for it's been seconded, so I should withdraw the motion, I'm not doing a withdrawal.
Smart withdrawal?
I am not.
Okay, all right, and then move in second, and any discussion? Who's seconding? All right, so, roll call.
Motion to amend the agenda and move board comments to section three B. Mr. Steve Johnson?
Hi.
What did you say?
Yes.
Hey, Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Henberg?
Yes.
Dr. Marino?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Ms. Hatcher?
Yes.
Ms. Lomel?
Yeah.
Ms. Snow?
Yeah.
Mr. Robb?
Yes.
She's going where? Overhand, did anybody sign up?
Mary, Speaker.
Public comment statement, the board provides for an opportunity to hear from the public. During this section of the meeting, any district resident or taxpayer may address the board on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. The purpose of this section of the meeting is to be heard, and as such, the board will not engage in a dialogue, but will listen to your concerns and follow up directly or through assigned administrative personnel as appropriate. Please begin your public comment by stating your full name. Each member of the public may speak for a maximum of three minutes. At the end of the three minutes, your time will expire. No participant may speak more than once on the same topic unless all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard, and only with permission from the presiding officer. Any comments to the board must be directed to the board president and not individual board members or administrators. Concerns related to specific buildings should first be addressed at the school building level and follow the chain of command before coming to the board. Any comments that are considered disruptive, obscene, abusive, slanderous, or debamatory will either be interrupted or terminated. No complaints may be made against specific employees, community members, or board members. Private information related to any student is prohibited.
Yeah, Ashley Murphy and O'Wayne Murphy are speaking separately or together. So how do you want to do it? Please come to the podium.
I'm into the mic.
Good evening, I'm Ashley Murphy, I wanted to bring the concern of bullying to the meeting tonight. Now, my daughter is in second grade and has been dealing with this issue since last year. It's not just my daughter, it's, it's other children as well. There are comments being made about children's weight, about their color of their skin, facial features, and I feel like if we can come together and make a plan to create a new school, then we could come together and make a plan to stop bullying. We need to show kids that it's okay to uplift, uplift each other and not tear each other down. And I know it starts in the household, but it also starts in our school because that is our safe haven for our kids, besides our homes. My daughter has made it very apparent that she does not want to go back to school multiple times, full-blown tears, hyperventilating, and I, as a parent, should not have to worry that my daughter is going to be another statistic of suicide because of bullying. And I, and I say that lightly because every year, there are multiple children from the age of six to teenagers that take their own lives because of bullying, and I refuse to let my daughter be another statistic. We carry assemblies for spirit, we do assemblies for other things, why not bullying? I feel like these kids have to have somewhere to turn and feel like they're safe and they're able to be heard without bullying other children. It, it has been going on, you know, since last year, and I'm sure, you know, it's in every school, but I was majorly bullied as a child, and my daughter is younger than I was when I was in school, and it's starting early with her. And I've already heard her say, "Am I ugly? Am I too stupid?" And that is not what a seven-year-old should be coming home and asking their parents. I just feel like we can do better as a society to show these kids that we can uplift each other and hold our ground straight instead of knocking each other down constantly. And that it is beautiful to be a different color, it is beautiful to have blue eyes and be a mixed child. It is beautiful to be a little bit bigger or a little bit skinnier, and I just feel like we need to give more positivity to these children so they're giving positivity to each other instead of tearing each other down. That is, that is the main thing, I think, I think is more important than transportation, and I was going to bring that up, but just speaking, and I, and I will always fight for my daughter, and, and this is the first way that I can, is to speak to you all and say something has to be done before we lose our children to this type, this type of speaking. Kim?
Do you want to speak?
Uh, no ma'am, I'm just.
David Squibb?
Good evening, everyone, Madam Superintendent, President, Vice President, School Board members. Let me first start off my comments by saying I'm a proud graduate of this district. I went to this school district many moons ago, but I'm a proud alumni and also a resident of this district. And, and I came, I went to school at a time when society was a little different. I went to school before Columbine happened, that was in nineteen ninety-nine. And you would think that would have been an aberration in our society, but with the frequency of school shootings and incidents happening with violence in the schools, I'm here, what precipitates mine is because I was on my timeline. In the last few weeks, I've seen an incident that occurred at the high school, it seems to be. It's through end of window and, you know, maybe gossip, but there was an indication that there may have been a weapon at the school district which caused a lockdown. And so, why I'm coming to you all is because I know you have a policy that deals with weapons. And the question I have, it says that the board recognizes the importance of a safe school environment relative to the educational process. Possession of weapons in the school setting is a threat to the safety of students and staff is, and is prohibited by law. Now, I know that there is a code of conduct and that the parents and students are made aware of that, and also that the penalty for that is expulsion. And I know that may be a deterrent for some, but also see that on your, in your policy, you say the board prohibits students from possessing and bringing weapons and replicas of weapons into any school district buildings. So my question is, how's that being done besides just a code of conduct or the threat of expulsion, because if that's the case, someone's already felt they could put it in even though they may have gone through the process? So, has the school district and school board thought about possibly metal detectors or anything of those, was there a study done? Was there research done? Was there a determination of those things? You know, children are, you know, protected, I work in an environment, I have to go to the Capitol Building on a daily basis, I've been working there for close to thirty years. Capitol Police know be my name, know my face, and yet I always have to go through the metal detectors, even just to go to lunch there, even if I'm meeting with a rep, and they'll call me to come meet with them, but yet I still have to go through metal detectors. So I'm asking, is that a consideration? Has that been done? And what is the thought process? Because I think that we will want not to be reactive but proactive, given situations that are occurring across this country. Thank you.
That's all, was it?
Okay, next up, we said, hand of the public, so since we moved board comments right up ahead of the public, and I'm pretty sure anybody on the board have anything to say. Start on this end. This end.
Well, I just want to say thank you to Ms. Ashley and Mr. Boyne Murphy. This board hears your concerns, and say thank you to Tony Squibb. This board hears your concern. I ask that we have the opportunity to speak to the public because when we're just generally having our regular board meetings, we usually greet you about this morning. Some community events that are going on, this happens to be Latino Hispanic Awareness Month, we are so good on that, so we're celebrating with our Latino Hispanic brothers and sisters, I always give my diverse moment for that. We're very proud of the diversity in our district, we are the most diverse in the, in the area, believe in the state, and so that's something that's very important to us. Also something that's important to us as a district and as a board is our student safety. And I just want to say to you that it's something that this board does not take lightly. Those of us who are, your board members are elected by the public, and so our responsibility is to you, the answer to you. And while we get along very well with each other and, and we agree on most things, and, and this particular iteration of the board, we've got very collegial working relationship, but I want to say to you that where we have differences, we're not afraid to work those differences out and discuss those things and bring them forward in what we all deem to be, what ultimately what the collective believes is in the best interest of our public. So I just want to reiterate and recommit our commitment to you and our responsibility to you, first and foremost, our parents, our students, our tax pay public.
Anybody else?
Okay, we come back down to the speakers.
Okay.
Sorry, somebody else.
Can we do this side? Do you think?
I, I started, I came down here and I asked, I did ask. Is everybody good?
Good now.
I'm back down here, yeah.
Yes, I, I go our best residents' comments. I, you know, as we approach November, you know, we sit in this fourth month of budget impasse at state level, and second, second week, first week, second week of federal impasse, it would be remiss of me to say that. You don't want anyone, the public, I don't want any parents to think that we are somehow prioritizing for student safety. Your learners' feeling of concern.
Please think of this a little bit.
We, we, we would never want any parent to feel like their child's identity, their child's sense of safety is being, is being sacrificed at the altar expediency or efficiency. Yes, we talk, you see a lot of talk about building a new school, but that's not the, that's not really the purpose for the referendum. Purpose for the referendum is to more equitably fund and support the types of programs that, those types of programs, those types of supports, they cost money. And, I mean, you've been hearing on the news that schools are terribly underfunded, and they're underfunded at the state level, they're underfunded at the federal level, and so, yeah, the responsibility falls back on us. One of the things that we're trying to do with the referendum is make sure that that obligation is spread. The way that the, the way that the current tax structure is set up, it's not fair. It, it's not fair to, not fair to residents, it's not fair to homeowners. We have tried to articulate over the last year, last two years, why this new, why this new structure would be more applicable. Make sure that everybody pays their fair share, and also make sure that those folks who are the most vulnerable are now so, you know, all of those FAQ, they're on the website, I encourage folks most importantly, I think, what seems to get lost in the back of the board buildings and fields and all of that is that you, you can't hire, you can't hire responsible teachers, you can't hire, hire responsible support staff, you can't hire responsible administrators that care about your kids without being able to pay. And that's, that, that's what the referendum is ultimately trying to accomplish. So, I, you know, I would encourage folks to read, study and ask questions. Time is ticking away, and ask questions, and, and yes, come to board meetings and demand, demand answers like, like you have, you appreciate you come front of us and, and holding us accountable we also want you to understand that we are working, we're working every day to make sure that we are responsive to those questions and being proactive and not reactive so I, all of those are valid questions, all of those are valid concerns, and the number one answer is, you have to invest, you have to invest in your mind, you have to invest in making them feel secure, make them safe, making them feel loved. And that takes, unfortunately, that takes reasons, capital, the reason people feel safe with capital because they have made that investment. So, we, we want to be responsive, but we have to, we have to be in a position to be responsive. Thank you.
You know, I'm, anybody else?
Welcome. I just, Murphy's, I just, it hurts my heart to hear that your child is being put, it really does. And that's something we, we really don't tolerate. So I just want you to know that it does hurt my heart. Thank you for speaking up for your child.
All right, a small, uh, yes, presentation. Celebrating our family, sitting in the room. It's freshly.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to present a parent to you today, her name is Vanessa Thomas. And Vanessa Thomas provides our school with many things, a lot of volunteers. So that's why she was selected by our team of teachers and our PTO. So Vanessa Thomas is a parent that is always willing to help. She has a first grade student, Alvin Thomas, in Ms. Dressler's class at Sarah Lindemuth. She goes into the classroom with storybooks as a reader on Friday. She's a source of good energy during class parties. She helps organize, decorate, and celebrate for various events with our students. Ms. Thomas is valued by our PTO as a committee member, where she shows initiative and she collaborates with our school spirit. She volunteers for the cashier at the district's traditional favorite, the Fall Fest and Book Fair. Ms. Thomas is willing to jump in wherever and whenever she can. She exemplifies the true spirit of volunteerism. She is generous with donations to the classroom, such as supplies, treats, and thoughtful surprises, and it all adds up to just helping our students thrive. So we'd like to thank Ms. Thomas as an example of being a supportive and engaged parent daily in our school.
Thomas, we want to thank you for really being, in your certificate it says, in recognition of your invaluable contribution to fostering a positive and supportive learning environment in our school community. So we thank you for all that you've done, there is your certificate. But you've also got a limited edition blanket.
Thank you.
All right, so these are not even in the school store.
Wow.
Take a picture of you, Ms. Press, you're in the middle. And if you don't mind, we're going to. I want everybody to know all the wonderful things you've done.
I'm on hands.
Yes, you're on the, you're in the middle, all right. Very good. Yeah, open it up so everyone can see. All right. Thank you.
Well, see, I've been watching carefully something this year.
There's not much where we're from, though.
Next up is Hannah Pantry.
Yes.
Who would beg a bear?
Some days it feels like that, that's for sure.
Good evening, everyone, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Lori Scheinhold, I'm the Executive Director of Hannah's Pantry. And I appreciate the opportunity to update everybody, especially the new faces, those of you that I haven't met yet, with some. everybody, especially the new faces, those of you that I haven't met yet, with some information about the pantry. The first update is actually on the first screen here. We've changed our distribution times to nine AM till 11 AM. So we've gone an hour early. And that seems to make volunteers and members happy. So if you're coming to volunteer, you can actually get home a little earlier. There we go. Just a really brief history. Most of you know it, but we have our beginnings over at Thomas Holtzman under the leadership of Mary Ali. When she retired, we, the Hannah Foundation worked with the school district to locate the location where the pantry is now. And we have worked faithfully with our churches, Faith the Man of Presbyterian, Tree of Life Lutheran Ridgeway Community Church of Brethren, along with obviously the school district and dedicated community members. We are proud to not, we are no longer a part of the foundation, but our own 501(c)(3) number. I'm really excited to have a big board of directors for the first time in the pantry's short six-year history. We have specific seats and specific roles, and I'm excited that we have all four of the building seats represented. So we have Kiva Sutton from the middle school, serving as our secretary and the middle school representative. We have Emily Eckert, serving at Sarah Lynn Demuth. We have Denise Nassup, who is serving as the Thomas Holtzman representative. And we have Tessa Stockdale at the high school. So their job is sort of to be the liaison between the pantry board and the administration in the building and help us meet whatever needs are there in, with the students. Because we all know that students who are hungry are not going to be great learners. So we're excited to have that. Board also needs to be strong, and so we're taking that to heart this year with our new board. So we had a retreat in the spring and we created these guiding principles. So this is just to show you that we are very intentional with what we are doing. Our pantry service, as we call it, continues to be our outdoor drive-through grocery distribution. Folks still stay in their cars and has been working really, really well for us. The unique model that we have, we are continuously reminded how it is different from other pantries, that we are not giving every single family a box of food, but we cater to not only the size of the family, so a small family is getting less food than a large family, but we're also trying very hard to honor the diverse community that we have and make sure that families have the kinds of foods that their families need at home. If you haven't driven by the high school on a pantry day, it's kind of what it looks like. We actually fill the parking lot one and a half times now. So we get about 300 families through in about two hours. If you zoom in on there, you can kind of see we split the line into two lines and families stop along our distribution route. And they are offered different items each week by our volunteers. No one's expected to take anything they don't want. They simply can say, no, thank you, and move on if it doesn't work. But we have about 50 volunteers every Saturday now, so two Saturdays a month. We've got our distribution crews, registration crew, traffic. So we start about, we'll start about seven now, with our earlier time, and we run through to about 1:30 or 12:30 now, gosh. So it's, it's wonderful. And we appreciate people like Dr. Willis, who volunteer their time to come for our sunrise crew. Always my joke to teachers, if you need some time with Dr. Willis, come volunteer at the pantry. That's right, that's right. So we have about 40,000 pounds of food coming out our doors each month. And to put that into some perspective, that's understandable to everybody, it's about 20 grand pianos worth of weight a month. So it's a lot of food going out our doors. And we have between 700 and 750 families that are coming to take that food home with them. So numbers, everybody loves numbers. To put our year in review, we talked about grocery pickups, not about families, because it's easier to understand when families can come to the pantry twice in a month. So we had almost 9,000 grocery pickups last fiscal year alone. That translates to about 14,000 children. So if you think we've got 31 or 3,300 here in the district, that's a lot of kids. 17,000 adults and over 5,000 seniors are coming. So many of them are raising our students right now. So we are just, it's eye-opening to see that. The Food Bank thinks we distributed about 364,000 pounds of food. It was way more than that. That's just the food that we got through the Food Bank, through the federal grants, and we spent about $70,000 in cash with the Food Bank last year alone. There's probably another $100,000 of food that we bought outright from retail outlets. We also distributed 60,000 diapers, along with feminine hygiene products and things like that. And our partnership with Ridgway continues, and we had almost 5,000 pancake breakfasts that were provided. They provided free breakfasts once a month. And Hannah's Closet happened also with about 3,700 pieces of clothing that went out for free. I will touch on the partnering with the district on the next screen, but we are supported by generous neighbors. It's the only way we can do this. We had almost $100,000 in grants from local foundations, the county, things like that. And we had 145 turkeys donated. So there's, you know, stay tuned on that one. And we had, it was about 239 volunteers that volunteered 9,000 hours. It's just amazing. In terms of the district, obviously, we're here, the whole reason the pantry really got the jump it had was because we know that learners are going to be more successful if they're not hungry. And meeting their families at home with groceries or meeting them halfway with groceries is going to make the difference. So we had the previous grade, it was 80,000 items of food during the fiscal year, during the school year last year. And that gets broken out into what I like to call our social services areas of the schools. We're providing snacks for all the specialized departments and classrooms. The building administrators have snacks just to sort of, you know, help with situations they may have. The nurses office has crackers and waters. We work very closely with our homeless liaisons and our McKinney venue students, making sure that they have what they need, whether it's food or personal care items, things like that. The athletics teams, I have, thank you for that. Coaches there. We provide a substantial amount of food to the football team and other athletics. The football team, though, every single game, they're getting sugary, like applesauce and things like that, to have it at the halftime. And we provide snacks throughout the year for those folks. The big number is 47,000 items. Between June 16th and August 31st, we provided 47,000 pieces of food items to the school district. So we had, we provided summer school to every single student for the five weeks in both buildings. We provided food to the back-to-school bash, things like 900 water bottles and 300 hot dogs and thousands of little snacks. There, we had snacks, breakfast snacks, in every single building, every single day of the first week of school, since there wasn't a traditional breakfast through the food services. And we provided breakfast at the high school, the whole second week of school, too. So that's a, it's a lot of food that we were happy, happy, happy to do. So the other thing that we're really proud of is that we helped 21 students graduate last year. Folks, the students who didn't pass their key stone exams, there are several pathways they have to meet those graduation requirements. And one of those ways is to volunteer. So those 21 students volunteered either 10 or 20 hours in the pantry, and they were delightful to have. There we go. Whoop, too fast. So where does this all come in? We need your support. We need the community's support. Obviously, the federal dollars have been diminished that are coming through the Food Bank and then to us. The federal, our state budget hasn't passed yet. So we are, we are working on reserves right now. So the other thing that's happening, obviously, is the trend of folks that are seeking assistance through the pantry is going to go up between now and the end of the year. So just quick numbers, we spend about $32,000 just in milk in a year. So, and what that milk looks like is actually kind of fun. Harrisburg's Aries delivers twice a month to us about that much milk. It's about 900 half gallons. We do some gallons, but that's the quick math. In terms of produce, there's a lot of cabbage there. So providing the proper amount of food for the family size means we have a lot of food. Here's just an example of the summer school breakfast we had. Everybody got a fruit, a juice, and then some sort of protein bar or breakfast bar. So that's the top is Sarah Lynn Demuth, the bottom is what the high school had. We were excited to expand things like the pantry garden. We had several volunteer groups that volunteered with us this year to do that kind of stuff. And then the bottom, our former school board, student representative Nick Mabry, his Eagle Scout project was to build a greenhouse. So that's over there in the garden, and we're excited to get that going this year. This is an example of some of the outreach that we do at our member area. These organizations come in and provide health-related information or financial information. And I just wanted to give a shout out. We had our second fundraiser two weeks ago, and these were the sponsors that we had, which then leads me into donate a turkey. The holidays, whether we want them to be or not, are right around the corner. So we purchased almost, almost 300 turkeys last year through the pantry. So I would love to bring that number down. And the more folks that are willing to donate their turkey or, you know, provide a donation to do that would be wonderful, because we provide the full Thanksgiving meal, all the fixings and groceries on top of it for that one. And of course, the heart of the pantry are our volunteers. But we're also looking at businesses and other organizations. We'd love to have the school board come and volunteer one day. Five or six folks coming in makes a huge difference in terms of our volunteer load. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you how you could donate to the pantry. So you can donate on our website. We take Venmo, PayPal. And if you can do nothing else, follow us on social media. The more people know about the service we provide, the more families we can get groceries in their door, and the more donations and things might trip our way, too. So that's it. Any questions?
So how do you volunteer? Do you just show up?
No. No, actually, we have 50 volunteers. It takes a lot to figure out where they're going to go. If you go to our website, hannahspantry.org, there's a volunteer link there, and you can get set up on our volunteer website. It'll get you in the queue. Our volunteer coordinator will get in touch with you, and then we'll get you in the door. Thanks for asking.
Maybe we could, with the movement, we could take a month and we all show them.
That would be wonderful.
That would be, that would be the easiest thing to do, if that's Bob's and Sarah's. What do you do with the second?
It's, it's complicated. It's not consistent, it's not consistent through the end of this year, because it's some of the way the holidays fell. So.
Then we'll, we'll play something that will show them and go out.
That would be wonderful. The dates are in the presentation on the donated turkey page, the dates that were open. So.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What percentage of your funding comes from county, state, federal sources of?
We had, we had a $45,000 grant from the county last year. We had $25,000 in what they call SFPP funds through the Food Bank and the Department of Agriculture. In terms of federal funds, anything we're getting that, we're not getting direct dollars. Those are donated in terms of food to the Food Bank, and then that's, it comes to us in terms, in in-kind food donations. Oh, we've seen it already. Oh, yeah. We used to get milk and eggs and things like that for free. That's, that's gone. But we're not getting the produce, we're not getting the frozen proteins that we used to. So we've already seen that. So, thank you.
And Marson?
Thank you.
Next up is finance. And I'd like to take everything except G, and it's the contract thing. Can I have A through F? Okay, we take, we take, we do F and G same way. And we'll do A through E.
Johnson moves the, Johnson moves out of A through E. Folks, that one's.
The movement second, any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? I have. Now, we'll do F. This is the pink out. For the, I get a motion to accept that. This is something we do every year. Johnson moves. Folks, second. The movement second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I have. G, can I get a motion? Johnson moves. Folks, second. Any discussion? This will be a roll call, though. All right, yeah. Roll call.
The price transportation agreement. Dave Johnson?
Yes.
Redden Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Marino?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yes.
Thatcher?
Yes.
Mrs. Laun?
Yes.
Mrs. Hell?
Yes.
Dr. S Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Rol?
Yes.
Motion passive line, you're out.
All right, thank you. Next up is personnel. Does anybody want to pull out? I think we've been over. A through, A through E. At A through E. Johnson moves. Folks, second. The movement second, any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? I have. I think that's all. No, no, we got, we have another action. If we go to the kitchen, it's arrest of this committee. Should read that up. We're in the committees, athletic committee. There's communication.
Communities and schools.
Thank you, Mr. Rolles. I presented in front of you before now.
I want you to talk when you talk, when you're in school, now, like I hear you.
Okay, yes, sir. You got it. Yeah. Just to make sure. Well, thank you all for having us this evening. My name is Angie D. Santiago, and like Dr. Willis said, I am a proud graduate of Sussbender Township. I am here on behalf of communities and schools this evening. We have been proudly partnering with the school district since the 2017, 2018 school year, where we first piloted the program at the middle school and have now grown into every building. And I'm just here to present our annual review data for last year. This is just a snapshot of our current team. One of the members had to leave. Our other members were not able to be here tonight, but just so that you are able to see the names of our site staff who are currently working in your buildings. Just a general high-level overview for those of you who are not familiar with communities and schools. We are a local nonprofit dropout insuency prevention program. We currently have 46 full-time members, 12 school districts that we partner with. The CCC DC is actually a preschool, I know that's a hint, that's a whole mouthful, is actually a preschool that we work with in Canberra County. So we actually partner with schools from the preschool level all the way till graduation. We currently serve 30 school buildings, and our annual budget is 4.1 billion. So our mission, our mission at communities and schools is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. We do so by implementing our three-tiered model of integrated student supports. Our model is very unique to us. It is an evidence-based model. And just to give you an overview of how we go about that, each of our site staff enter these buildings within Sussbender Township. They do a school needs assessment utilizing your data, utilizing your data from campus, utilizing local data that's provided. And while they collect those baselines and they collect that data, they then take that, assess it, analyze it, and create your school support plans. So the school-wide goals, they will say, if we need to look at attendance, if your attendance is down this year, then we are going to focus on implementing attendance initiatives and/or incentives. So they access your needs assessment, and then we do our school support plan, and then our site staff start our three-tiered level of supports. And here are some examples of those supports. So we support your students on a whole school level. So that's just not just the students, that's your staff, that's also your parents and families in your community. Also on a tier-two level, which is our group curriculum. So these are targeted students. These are students who have a pocket of need typically referred by the administration and/or counselors. And our site staff will run groups. It could be social-emotional learning groups. It could be bullying prevention groups, peer mediation groups, et cetera. And then what I like to call our bread and butter is our tier-three, which is our case management. Our staff are able to case manage up to 10% of their building enrollment. Case management is very targeted as well. These students receive their own individual needs assessments with baselines from their previous school years, and then they also receive their own individual support plans for their students to have written in incentives, and how our site staff are going to help be the advocate and cheerleader for these students. So data for last school year, we were able to serve 161,501 students through our tier-one, so our whole school supports. Again, some examples of these supports could be parent engagement nights. This could be PBIS events that our staff help run. This could be some sort of like a coffee. This could be some sort of, like a coffee hour in the morning to welcome parents into the school building to facilitate a culture of togetherness with staff. Five hundred and fifty-eight parents were served through these tier-one initiatives. Twenty-four basic need items were distributed, and then eighty-six students were case managed in total last year. Our results, sixty-one percent of the students who were case managed by our site staff improved in their attendance goals, sixty percent improved behaviorally, sixty-one approved academically, and then sixty-one percent made positive progress towards their annual goals. Some highlights, initiatives, and coordinations from last year, some of my favorites at least. Oh, sorry, skip ahead. Art Net programming. So Communities and Schools has been able to broker the Art Net program for three years now in Susquehanna Township. For those of you who are not familiar with the program, it is an after-school program where students are able to learn about artists, specifically tailored to the demographics of our students that we're working with. We do believe that representation is very important. And so therefore, our students are able to learn about artists, learn about the work that goes into their art. They actually do art on their own, and then they have an end-of-year art show that their parents are able to come and view and see what their students have been doing. Again, we've been able to broker that for three successful school years now. We were able to implement a family fitness zumba night at Sarah Lindemuth and Thomas Holtzman that had a lot of great participation. I myself attended, might have danced a little bit, might have been a little shy. But the students, just seeing the students and families just dance together, celebrate together, and also alongside the staff in that building was something that was near and dear to my heart. At our high school level, we have our site coordinator Asia Robinson, who is facilitating Girl Talk empowerment groups. She was able to get State Representative Patty Kemp to come in. So that picture right there is Patty talking to the girls who participate in that group, just about what it means to be a woman in a difficult field, and share some of her struggles that she, you know, has endured in her lifetime. At Thomas Holtzman, our site staff facilitates and is the liaison for the Hannah Bus Safety Program, which is near and dear to the heart of the administrators in that building as they struggle behaviorally with, you know, making sure the kids learn how to ride the bus safely. Also at Thomas Holtzman, our site coordinator was able to facilitate a parent engagement night after school, which was a family kickball event. And that was also a great success. And then at Sarah Lindemuth, we had an end-of-year family movie night. As you'd imagine, the kids maybe didn't sit so well for that, but it was still very well-attended. There was over two hundred students and families in attendance that night. Okay, there we go. So looking ahead, we're just really, first off, I'm an alumni of this area. I'm really happy to be serving Susquehanna, and not only that, we are serving in all of the buildings. We're looking to continue these programs as you guys continue to grow here in this community. We love partnering with the Hannah Pantry and other local community organizations. So we've actually been able to bring in incentives and rewards from Get Air, Urban Air, a local Amish farm, and we're consistently writing to different agencies and organizations to see if they can help, you know, better the lives of the students and families here. I'm currently working with Girl Scouts of America and Big Brother, Big Sister as well, to see how we can all come together, again, to support these students in this district. We're always looking for opportunities for internal district student mentorship programs. So we have a site staff at the high school. We would love to see a high school mentor be able to mentor maybe the kids at Sarah Lindemuth, since there is that shared parking lot. And then something brand-new this school year is we've been able to bring in executive functioning groups facilitated by our site staff specifically at the middle school due to the need right there. And that's the update for last school year, thank you. And are there any questions?
Questions? So, all right, so. You don't have to put you on the spot. So it's, it's committed time. And I don't know if Ms. Jones is here yet, she's not.
No.
Okay, so I guess my question is, so you heard from the family earlier today, that's the slogan, right? Like, what would you say to them in terms of how CIS is a resource for them? Because I see, you know, you have your tier-two and tier-three. What would your, like, what would your mitigation look like for a young girl like that? Six, seven-year-old, like she. I would hate to think that that beautiful little girl is not participating in things like movie night, Zoom, but like all of that stuff because she doesn't want to come to school. So how, how do we keep young people like her from falling through the, falling through the cracks?
Absolutely, I actually thank you for that question, because when that family was speaking, it did really resonate with myself. And the fact that my site staff are the types of individuals that this student should be connected to. So first of all, I don't know if a lot of you know this, but October is actually National Bullying Prevention Month. And so therefore, you know, our staff could facilitate large-scale tier-one, you know, anti-bullying type of events within the school. I would also say that this student should be paired with the site coordinator at that building, because this person is the advocate, the cheerleader, you know, the mentor in that building for students like this. I would encourage the student to attend lunch groups that the site coordinator would have. I myself served in this role, and personally, when there were students who kind of fell on the outskirts and maybe didn't have a lot of friendship groups, or maybe weren't the most outgoing, those were the students that I would invite to my lunch groups, and they would end up attending amongst their peers. And the conversation would be very organic, and by the end of it, they were students that were passing each other in the hallway previously that were now friends, and, you know, hugging or dapping each other up, or whatever the case would be. So I would say that communities and schools is a large support, particularly for students just like that, and there's a plethora of things that our site staff could do. And specifically also, we can go outside of the school building and meet the family in the community. That's something I think that's very different, you know, outside of typically like what your counselor is able to do. Our site staff can assist in getting the student maybe connected to outside resources as well, whether that's like the YMCA, again, Big Brother, Big Sister, other organizations.
Yeah? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean?
Good evening. Just have a few things in regards to athletics, just kind of want to keep you guys updated. First, I was looking at our athletic academic policy essentially that we have in place right now. I'm gonna kind of give you guys this idea on how it works, which is on-brand with every other district that I'm familiar with, at least. We run our weekly reports, and if you're failing two or more classes, you're considered ineligible. Where I would like to make a transition, I feel, is if we're outdated, is at the end of the year, which ultimately has an impact on our fall students. So at the end of the year, when we run the final grades for the full school year, right now within our school, if that same aspect, if you're failing two or more classes, that then rolls over to the next school year in which you will have to sit out fifteen school days. Where with the PIAA has it set up currently where you must pass at least four full credits for the school year. And if you don't, then that same penalty will occur where you then have to sit out fifteen school days. So just looking at that, I just would love to make sure, you know, we're just all on the same page. It's something that we could possibly make sure that we have in our policy, to make sure, we don't have to be aligned with the PIAA. We can make our own stipulations if they're tougher than that. And that's ultimately where we're at with that. Where my concern is with that is if we have a student athlete that starts off the year tough, and they fail just a one semester course, something that's not even technically full year, that counts out as failing one class. So when we talk about athletes, or the students in general having the opportunity to, you know, right their wrongs, sometimes they're not even given that. And when we talk about failing classes, like when we run our eligibility reports, failing is failing. So it doesn't matter if it's a half-year or full year. So when we look at that full year at the end, that is something that can, you know, harm them. So just looking at what the PIAA rules is and what everybody else is doing, I think that it would be on-brand for us to assure that as long as our athletes are passing four, four credits at the end of the final, excuse me, at the end of the year, then that should be enough. Keep, yeah. What's that say again?
They're passing four credits at any.
Yeah, so I think. Right, so when, sorry for any confusion. So we look, I don't look at that until the end of the year is what I'm saying. So what I'll do is I will look at the kid's full-year academic report, and I would just tally up the credits. So as long as they have reached at least four full credits within that school year, they are deemed eligible for the next year. Whereas if right now, if a student is failing two classes throughout the whole year at the end. So when I look at that final report, we're talking at the end of the year. If I look at that final report and the student has failed two classes, right now, they will be considered ineligible. And this really honestly only impacts our fall student athletes, because they're the kids that roll over from the end of the school year to the next season. So if you're just a winter or a spring athlete, this wouldn't have any impact on you.
The man's saying, oh, come here.
Yeah.
That's a question.
How many credits? He was staring.
So.
Four credits each class?
Yeah, so your core, your core class is four credits. Your electives too. So what he, what he's saying is, even, it's too many that come at this. He's talking about the end of the year, but it's also a weekly thing, too. It's like, you could be, from what our policy is right now that we've been instituting with our athletes, you could be passing, like, math, English, science, and be failing social studies, and a half a credit like gym class, and, oh, I won't say gym sometime, but.
Or like psych, something like psych.
And you'll be ineligible, but PIAA, you're not ineligible by PIAA, you're eligible by what the standard we have set. Hell, kids too, on our own. You really, we want to be like, if you're failing two core, and it really breaks down to if you're failing two core classes, then you're ineligible. But if you're failing one core and are technically by the PIAA, you're still eligible. You're just not eligible here, Susquehanna Township.
So I, I'm confused, what's your concern? Is it a concern that you're getting pushback from parents?
No, so the reality of it is, the policy that we have in place is ultimately tougher and more difficult than was the general PIAA.
Not aligned.
It's not aligned with what everybody else is offering across.
Which is within our authority to do.
Right.
So.
So, so if a kid fails his two electives in that first semester, say he fails psych and music, which are both half-year courses, and then he goes on and he dominates, or she dominates, the rest of the school year, they have now, they may have finished that school year with five, five and a half past credits, but also technically failed two classes. But in reality, that would only equal one full credit that they failed, because those are both half-years.
You say, based on our standard, they'd be ineligible following.
For the first fifteen school days of the following fall.
Right, so, so rather than, okay, so let's, let's shift the conversation a bit. Rather than talk about, like, the reaction to that, what are coaches doing to respond, like, when they see the early warning?
So that brings me to my next one. Yeah, so we actually started something, I was gonna bring this next, called Alert Your Athletes Protocol. So a lot of our coaches have done a great job with, you know, mid-week check-ins and things that they have in place. But something that I assure, to make sure that all athletes are doing is, when I'm sending out eligibility reports, coaches are not only getting those that are failing, but anyone that has a D. So if you have a D or anything more, so now we're talking about our kids that are on that radar, or possibly even be close to failing, our coaches are alerted. So that's one of the things that I think, when we look at where we start in the fall, and I commend a lot of our coach, all of our coaches, because when you look at the eligibility reports, we have not had a lot of kids ineligible. So this is something, when I talk about a big-picture thing, this isn't necessarily a true issue for us to be transparent. But when we talk about supporting all of our athletes, this is just something that's brought to the table. But when we, our Alert the Athletes protocol, our coaches have been very, you know, up-to-date with that. Our athletes work hand-in-hand with AAP, where if you're failing, if you're ineligible, you must tend two out of the three AAP classes. So academics, when we look at the numbers, hasn't been a true significant issue in that sense, and Alert the Protocol has been one of them.
But that has to be an act of that.
Right.
So what about, what about the wrestler?
Okay.
Hasn't, like, he's in pre, they're in pre-workout.
Right.
They have a D.
Right.
That protocol wouldn't flag, because that wrestling season hasn't started yet, unless you were pulling, are you pulling from last year's?
No, because to be transparent, turnovers is too much to pull from last year, because then we have kids that aren't coming back. We wait until we get a season, just more or less for accurate things. Now, I will say from my end, we talk about those type of kids. I meet with about fifteen to twenty kids weekly that I pull from coaches that I talk about academics and other things and such. So they're, and I will also applaud that we do have a lot of coaches that do stay engaged even when they're out of season. But for us to pull academic reports based off of last year's schedules, kind of just, that's not, it's not as accurate as we probably would like, to be honest with you.
What about having kids opt in? So if you go to, if you go to pre-workout, why not opt in, or that way you catch it? Like, right? It doesn't make sense when kids start practicing and, and they're already on the cusp.
Right.
And they're not being direct, like, if they're, if they are availing themselves for the team, can we, like I said, can we have them opt in so that they can be on the radar?
Yeah. Yes, and I have that conversation in deeper detail, but like I said, I think our coaches do a good job, like you said, setting that standard within the preseason as far as the expectation academics and how they check it, kind of varies within. But I do think a lot of our coaches do a good job setting that tone and standard well before the actual season. But I'll definitely look at it from our end as far as the alert aspect as well.
I, I agree, I just, you know, you always want to, like, you want to shoot for uniformity, right?
For sure.
You know, like, there may be superstars.
For sure.
That are doing it, and there may be folks that aren't doing it.
For sure.
Want to bring them up to the baseline of, like, everybody's doing.
Right.
Which, and that brings me to my next question.
Well, maybe, maybe, did you finish your report? You got some more stuff?
Just a little bit more.
Didn't finish, and then maybe what you asked, maybe you're giving your answer. If I didn't finish, then you're gonna ask that.
I just wanted to shout out some members that qualify by name. We have multiple med pin qualifiers, both for the tennis team, who finished over five-hundred this year, had a great year, and then the cross-country team. So the girls' tennis team coached by Coach Port and Coach Weber, Sophia Field, Sue Rockwell, Savannah Morris, Tubanur, Miranda Young, Preis Tamang, and Natalie Picking. And then we also had three cross-country med pin qualifiers, Nat Anthony Do, Aiden Faulkner, and Nevyn Claudio. Just a few other shout-outs, wanted to shout out our girl soccer team, who went down running and won a running high school tournament. We've had two youth nights in the last month, both for field hockey and for football, that was both successful. Field hockey had over about fifteen to twenty, and football had about forty to fifty. So I just wanted to applaud our coaches for taking those steps to help bridge our feeder programs. Our first newsletter went out, we'll continue to do that monthly, that seemed to have been successful, got a lot of positive feedback in that regard. The BSN store is active, and our football team is seven and O, first in the district. Opportunity to go ten-oh, which for, don't quote me on it, but I think is the first time in school history, or won a few. But currently, it's first in District Three and Four-A, so they're definitely doing a great job right now.
Yeah, but okay, I'm gonna have him finish, he was asking a question. But I stopped him, let him finish his report.
Okay, so, returning back to my white blanket.
Yeah.
So we're talking about, and the athletic report is great, but because it's the education and athletics, I want to go back and flag the concern that I have is, it's not even a concern, it's a suggestion. So those students that were flagging, I know we mentioned AAP.
Right.
Are there any opportunities? I know the buzzword now is high-impact tutoring. And if the federal government was working, they would have grants available. But is there any, is there any opportunity to explore, like, whatever the reformed Department of Education is doing in terms of grant work, or high, high-impact tutoring, identifying students who are sort of on the cusp, and then targeting them in school tutoring? Because I think, I think the, the numbers show that when students don't have a choice, and they are captive audience in school, and they receive tutoring, the grades go up.
Right.
As opposed to giving them the option of either going tutoring or home.
Right. So, in my personal belief, uh, AAP is like the most impressive tutoring environment I've ever been in. Uh, because there's multiple teachers geared toward each subject there, so there's, it's not a general study hall where you're coming in. Um, and even the teacher to student ratio in there, uh, every time I walk in, there's one to one or one to two. So when we talk about high tutoring, obviously, yes, absolutely, I think there's grants and opportunities out there. But I think we do a good job in house right now, providing, like, it is, is very impressive what I walk into and I see in that cafeteria three days a week. So, um, I understand what you're saying as well, and I, to answer your question, yes, uh, but I think we have more than enough. Not to say, you can always go get more, uh, but we have multiple teachers of each subject, um, there. And when we talk about combining that with student athletes, uh, when I do send out those eligibility reports, that also goes out to our AAP facilitator. Um, so then when she runs the reports, um, she then sends the attendance for each day cuz she knows the standard as well as far as two out of three days. She then sends the attendance, um, back to me and the head coach of that sport. So now we are assuring that those kids are there for two, two or the three sessions. So, um, to answer your question, yes, uh, but also think we're doing a lot of things in the house, um, that kind of, you know. Help us stay on this track from academic standpoint.
Let me, let me give you a value of that as well, we'll come back to you.
Uh, so my question was just about, you said that you're checking at the end of the year. And, um, I just wanted to get clarification upon, uh, when coaches are checking, cuz I also heard you say about on a weekly basis.
Yes, sorry, so.
Week to week, if they are still passing and not.
Yeah, so we run eligibility report weekly, we have to, uh, and coaches are running eligibility reports weekly. What I do at the end of the year is I take all fall sport athletes and I have to look at their final transcript of that year. To determine their eligibility for the start of the fall. But the expectation on a week to week basis is that we're running our general reports, that's where we do our, uh, athletes protocol, alerting those, uh, and coaches are doing those. I know, for example, Coach Eden, um, has athletes, and I know they were doing this with basketball as well, uh, where they have a printout where. Teachers have to sign off on their grades every Wednesday, and that's prior to me even running my report. So that's just example of one of the weekly things that are taking place, but we are running them weekly, to answer your question.
Just in the following, I, I have to think that, speaking out of turn, I can't even recall if it was our district or another district, I think it may have been ours. And I think this was public, uh, P I double A wise. How will we avoid, or is our evaluation process stringent enough throughout the year so that we don't get to a point at the end where? We find ourselves ineligible or where upon after action, we view, we find that there was some ineligibility. Because maybe it fell through the cracks or something like that, and then we're happy to get it back.
Yeah, I don't, I think we have a, a clean protocol, uh, sometimes the biggest confusion and transparency is when you're dealing with the students that. Aren't necessarily in the building, um, but I think we have had, we have clean things in place to deal with all of our, our kids that don't tend to high school. So that I, I would say is probably the, assume the biggest challenge when you're talking about keeping things clean is when you're talking about students that go to DC Tech. Cyber, um, but coaches, um, students are all well aware of what the expectation is. Um, even when a kid joins mid-season, there's a clear expectation on what that is before they're even clear. So, Tans, we shouldn't, that, in my opinion, that's unacceptable to have, not that things don't happen, uh, but I think when you're clear with the expectation. Um, kinda avoid a lot of those things.
So you look at the fall, just the fall students.
Yes, cuz that's the only ones that had an impact. I'm sorry.
Look at the fall students. Who, starting out the year. Don't they deserve a fresh start?
Yeah, that.
And, because you're looking at them, the students that did do well, that are, might be in the spring sport, has plenty of time to bring their grades up. They're not being penalized because they weren't the best in the previous year. So where is the?
I agree a hundred percent, but the base of the rule comes from the P I double A, so that's, that's above, but the rule is the rule. What we do is, we actually, like I said, in my opinion, I think we make it a little bit more tough, but at the end, I agree with what you're saying. But there is a baseline of what the P I double A sets, uh, regardless of what you need for the full year.
Yeah, I think, I think you clarify some things here. So, it's so many words, but he's asking us, and I think what the district have done in the past, they put these guidelines in. And the P I double A says, if you pass this many subjects, you're eligible. We say, you are ineligible. So we, we, we go back to, to what he wants, whatever the P I double A says is eligible, that's what we go by. Point blank, is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
Exactly, so, and we can beat this horse all night long, but the bottom line is this. The P I double A has rules, and if we follow the P I double A rules, and what's been happening. Harrisburg, Susquehanna, has a tendency to change the rules that make it more vigorous for their kids. Than anybody else in the state. So our kids always end up ineligible, but Cedar Cliff and Compton Valley, and Central Dolphin. They just ease on down the road, because we're gonna make it hard. Okay, so that's what he's looking for, and I think that's something that you guys put in place, we vote on it, or how, how is that?
I take a look, I don't believe it's policy, it might be.
It is a, it's a policy, well, it's a policy. They had that policy in Harrisburg, because they had. A seventy-seven with a C.
So we need to bring it for the board.
Yes. Now, anything else on that, where?
That is it.
That was the biggest thing, did everybody understand what he was saying about that?
Get it down.
Sometime the experience do help.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I would ask for some, I don't know that our policies change. I, I, I'm suggesting, uh, as, as you brought up. So whether, whether it's a policy or procedure, I don't know that the procedure is a problem. As you alluded to, it may be oversight of the procedure. If you're saying switching to more active policing of coaching staff. Or collaborating with coaching staff to be more vigilant. And reporting out weekly and catching those things, and I think there's two parts to this, what I was getting. There's the identification, there's also the remediation. Nothing's gonna happen without the remediation, that's, that's why I'm suggesting, and to your point, yes, AAP is a, is a wonderful tool. Um, I, I, I would even argue that we can be more, uh, proactive and push. Push that to make it less optional. Cuz I, I feel like with athletes, you have a, you have a perfect pilot group of folks who are incentivized. To, to get the grades up, right, or else they don't play. Uh, eventually, uh, expanding that universe of, of. Participants to the entire school district, my ultimate goal, because ultimately, you're trying to. Make sure that kids have access to those or to leave in school. Um, and again, for the average student, there's no incentive to go to AAP. Uh, because there's no, there's no sport that they would, there, there's no, there's no consequence of not going to AAP. Right, so I'm, and I'm not saying for your folks, I'm saying for the students in general, uh, finding ways to incentivize that. In school while you have them captive to be seen like, uh, a better way, a better net to catch all of those potential. But I think, and you can show the effectiveness of that program using. Yes, you have a, you have a, a good test group, you have an incentivized test group, and you can show improvement. We live in a district where everybody complains about test scores, nonstop. And we, uh, you know, if they complain about test scores, but they don't offer solutions. I'm trying to get us to a point where we are offering solutions to get, to, to, to show some improvement. Or at least to encourage, uh, parents to, uh. Encouraging parents to talk about possible solutions instead of just complaining.
This, this word of record, sometimes I'll, I'll, I'll start, like you said, it's not optional if you're, if you, if you're failing. That you must go, for, for, if you're an athlete, so it's not, that, it's not.
Right, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, athletes don't have, but what about regular, that, that's what I, I guess that's what I'm getting at, like, this work, this, this helps athletes. But this is the education in athletics, I get what you're saying, but I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get the board to think beyond it.
So, so, so what I could probably do for the board is, cuz what I'm hearing is you're talking about. What's occurring during the day that is awful remediation for kids that are struggling. That's a separate conversation that I could probably give you some insight on, like, in the executive session or present, or, or we want that to lay out, look. I mean, there is things that are being worked on by a high school administration to address what you're talking about.
I think they're related, I don't think, I, I get what you're saying, they're just, they're distinct, but I think they're related, they still, they still relate to. That, that's for anybody out here in a, in a listening audience, they don't make, they don't make distinction, athletes.
Any other questions? Yep.
I think that's it.
If we roll back, I guess, our, we can see all these, all these credits because someone was happy or not before. From my understanding, right now, this is based on the rules right now, if you're going to, of course, if you have to go to the next year, to help your health.
You have to go to AAP and you are also ineligible.
Okay, so now if we roll this back to just with the P I double A, will that still be in place?
Yeah, so this is, yes, absolutely, nothing, and we will still be following this, a similar process for our weekly reports. This is only at the end of the year when we talk about the transition from the full year to the following year. But our expectations, excuse me, in regards to weekly check-ins, the expectations that AAP two out of the three times, nothing changes with that. No, absolutely.
It's not written in there, what we're discussing. So.
Not in this.
It's not written in specific courses.
Okay.
So that is something that.
There is no policy saying about athletes have to have four or two credits to be eligible if they fail, there's nothing there.
It does say that the board further adopts those eligibility standards set by the constitution PA. Interlast, interscholastic athletic associations, so P I double A.
So, so what you would do is get their policy. And we adopt their policy.
Sounds good.
But it's already in there, it's already in there.
It's already.
P I double A is already in our policy.
But if it's already there. But right, some man could have hold us coming, and we couldn't do nothing about it, keep that kid from not playing. If you really wanna look at it.
It sounds like it's been an administrative regulation of years gone by, and it's never been updated or no one's ever questioned it.
And no one ever questioned it. So we already did.
All right, thank you guys.
You're welcome. But Mr. Dean, I do wanna say, um, uh, thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Because had you not, any parent be upset for whatever reason, um, the board still needed to know.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
And then if, if they would have boarded up, we could have kept that kid from playing. Am I right? But they ain't nothing to say.
If that's our, if that's our administrative reg, yes, it is, we, we still can uphold it, it's just now. So this doesn't say that we will over, it doesn't say that P I double A overrides administrative regulations. Says we will also include P I double A. We have, include, right, so we can be more rigorous, we can't be more lax than P I double A. So, now the board has, yes, you don't mind us making it a little more in line with P I double A, then we'll do that.
I, you've got to be a parent who would argue that academic stringency is a problem. That's.
So some parent, no, I mean, some, a family may say you're letting down the standard.
That's what they say.
So if we align with P I double A, some could argue, we are lowering our standard, because right now we're going rigorous.
Right, so, are you getting, I guess, is this a solution in search of problems? Like, are there students, are there parents out there saying, I don't like your rigorous academic standards?
There are some, yes, yes, and then there's, but more than that, we're looking at how we align with other districts. And what their players are able to do and our players are not, so that's essentially what it is, not really a parent complaint, for sure.
Not, not to be trick, like, if I'm a parent, I'm concerned about the application of the standard, right? Like, I'm, I'm concerned whether the application being implemented is equitable, but.
Right.
Say that it's unfair because it is high.
Well, but if, but think about the parent that came from another district, if you went to the district, you have a student athlete in that previous district.
Sure.
They would not have been, um, uh, prevented, but they are here, so. Right, they won't be going forward.
Right.
But to your point, would a parent be upset that we're more rigorous, they absolutely could be, if they came from another district, that does not have any standard.
But that would be any parent, because of our higher, because of our higher academic, our higher academic scale, right? Just our scale alone.
Yep.
So, whether it's, I mean, and you, there's the argument that athletics at the high school, at the high school level is voluntary, right?
So, I, I, I see what you're saying, but give me a, a good example. Whatever, at one time, we had this problem in Harrisburg with these scores, so I called the NCAA and asked them one question. I said, we say we have a seventy-seven for a C, what I would have said, they said, whatever your school say, that's what we go by. But seventy is the minimum, and then I fought, and I fought, and I got them to change it. Because what I said to the district, you wanna be spent, for a bottle of water, Harrisburg had to pay a dollar a second, you pay a dollar. Is that fair? If, if you got a seven-point skill, that's what we're talking about, and so we changed it, so the same thing I see here, if we. Tougher than the P I double A, will we hurt you?
I'm never gonna argue that academic standards being public is bad, man.
Okay, all right, and next, anything else?
Okay, next up is, uh, I wanted to, uh, I wanted to say, while this is, this on TI level was presented for community and schools. I just wanted to, to go on record that the board recognized that, that, uh, Sarah Linda most specifically. Okay, to be honest with you, but specifically at that school that the parent was here, we, people, community and schools is a part of a very robust. Of positive behavior and support structure that's put in that select, that's, uh, recognizing at the state level for about, um, nine or ten years running. Um, and also, uh, the bullying prevention, um, that has been, practices that have been instituted, that's like, have been recognized at the state level as well. We actually have staff members that will speak at, uh, bullying prevention, uh, rallies and things of that nature, uh, on record. So those practices, those, uh, we go with always, uh, bullying prevention. Uh, we also have, uh, anti-bullying in our pledge that's, that's stated daily at that level. Um, the, we have a, be a buddy system, it ties in with the PBIS system, so I just wanted to make sure everyone on record that said there are several things that exist. That community and schools make more, even more robust as a support system. To try to ensure that we, you know, stay on top as best as possible as a district, or learners that are given bullying, to try to educate. Uh, what that looks like for some of our, our younger learners.
Let, let me ask the question, I asked the whole board this question, so if a kid is in the bathroom and another kid turn the light on and off. Is that bullying, this?
Part of, part of the educational piece, especially at the K to two level, is not only educating the children on what constitutes bullying. But sometimes we also have to take advantage of being able to, um, educate parents on what actually bullying is.
That's what I'm asking.
So that is probably an example that kinda gets pulled into that educational piece, cuz sometimes it's overlooked, a kid comes home, they say, I was, I was called a name. And then, you know, it could be perceived by the parent or something, you know, my, my child was getting bullied, so that is an educational component there. That we, that we have instituted, that we have constant conversations with, with families, and we definitely try to set the foundation for. Entering kindergarteners and learners that come to the K to two level for sure, and continuing into, you know, our secondary.
That's what I was asking, is, you consider that bullying? Yeah, that's what I was asking then, you consider that bullying?
By definition, that is not bullying.
Why I ask this question? Because my granddaughter came home and said to me, they're bullying, that's what you mean, they turn the light on and off in the bathroom, Brandon, I said. So they turn the light on in the bathroom, so, so somebody bullying, I said, who, who was doing it, she says, uh, kindergarten, I said, really? Now, I talked to her, I said, I don't think that's bullying, well, if you say, hey, turn the light back on and move on, but. I would never bring that to, in fact, and say it's bullying.
I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware, that there is a tremendous amount of.
I just wanted to ask that question, because I, because I hear this word bullying all the time. And it just gets to me, I, I just trying to figure out what is bullying? And, uh, I, I, you know, I, if I take you back to the, to the fifties, I have, we saw a movie, and what we saw was movie bullying. You're on a playground fighting, that was, you know, big, but I'm just saying that it's been going on for forever, never, we just make such a.
Perception and interpretation, I think. We definitely take it seriously, and we definitely try to institute practices that can come back.
So the next up is, uh, high school courses. Anything on that, any discussion on that, Steve?
Internet? I'm sorry, uh, we're discussing on, uh, what, high school courses. What exactly is the modified curriculum?
So, the academic, the modified curriculum is designed for learners who, um, may have learning challenges. And so, as school districts, we, uh, regularly, uh, provide modified curriculum. So that those learners can access the same curriculum, and they're not disabled peers, but they modify the pace or the amount of. Instruction or content that we cover.
Another question? Steve?
And so would that be like if it's necessary for them, like if they're requesting the modification, or?
No.
Reason they need it, no, that's based on their I P. Okay, so their I P team, so they'd still get the Spanish, just modify to their own name?
Yes.
Anything on D? I, I can see it's got condemnation, standard language, is there, uh, I didn't see anything specific in the. Language about, uh, updates to the platform included, so like, are we going to be? Do we get pushed, is there a language in here that allows for us to get pushed updates to the platform as they become? Like, I'm assuming this is soft, this breathes like a software subscription.
It's our stu, it's our whole student, it's campus, it's our whole student information system, so it, it's grades, it's behavior, it's parent messaging, it's all of those things.
Is there, have there been any talks about like updating the platform? And, okay, and this remit includes those, like those, we not, we don't, there's no change requests coming out every time.
So, this empty this campus, this is what we're using for, uh, is this our email or local policy system, like this is what we're using. This is, this is what we're using to notify.
Yeah, building communications that are sent out to parents throughout the district, typical campus, this is our. Student information system, everything you wanna know about grades, attendance, behavior, student information, all of it's housed under this.
As a parent, you, uh, go in, you do things like pay, well, for lunch was, you get paid for lunch, you. I mean, even now, you, you put money on the counter, you contact, contact teachers through the portal, you can, uh. You receive updates, receive, uh, specific information to your, to your children, and then for your, uh, student, it's their grade. The parent can view the dashboard, but the, the, the student actually, uh, can see their assignments.
And just over my period, what, what, what's our chain, what's our update to this agreement, cause this wasn't existing. Yes, what's the update?
I believe their legal team just updated their licensing agreement, said, oh, oh. I'm sorry, I can hear, I believe their legal team updated their licensing agreement, this is.
I says.
Thing for them, and they've sent it out to all their users to, for update every month file.
Uh, new story. Title one. Two intended.
Yes, discipline data, oh, wait, did you have a question about title one? Alright, so Mr. Bishop will chair, um, yes, please, thank you. So at, um, our meeting in August, I had shared with the board, um, what we would report each month. And those are our state reportable, um, numbers, the state reportables. Um, our behavioral infractions that the state requires every school district in this, in the Commonwealth. Uh, to report at the end of each school year, there is a website, and I provided that in a previous, um. Meeting, in the previous presentation as well, uh, we submit a report and all the accounts of. How often these infractions have occurred, uh, month over month, and then they do a, a calculation, it also includes the number of arrests. At the end of the year, and so the state uses the report, uh, to determine if a school is considered persistently dangerous. Uh, and so we are fortunate that, of course, we're, we're not anywhere near that designation, but this is all public knowledge. And so I just wanna present, uh, our numbers thus far, so each time I provide a report. For this portion of the work session, you will see, um, our data, now, some of these I did not report, they're a laundry list of infractions. I don't report the ones that have very few infractions, but I also selected the ones. That I believe the board may want to know most about, so if you take a look, this is, uh, twenty-three years worth of data. So twenty-three, twenty-four is black, and twenty-four, twenty-five school year is red, and the twenty-five, twenty-six year is. White, or gray, and so for simple assault on staff, uh, we had one in twenty-three, twenty-four. Zero, uh, last year, uh, in terms of simple assault, and then, uh. Zero this school year, thus far, that is just through September, we are currently gathering data on Octo, in October. So at our work session in November, we'll have all of our November, uh, October data, and so I will report that out. Fighting, we had, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we had two, um, and then I will talk a little bit about this as you look at the numbers. Um, fighting for last school year, we had three, and then fighting this year, so far we've had one. Um, so far, that's just through September, so we haven't quite gotten there yet, so this is for the month of September, so. If you're thinking, wait a minute, I know we had more fights this year, we're only looking at September right now, so we just started. So minor in, uh, altercations, uh, the previous two school years, zero, uh, we've had two so far this school year. Uh, reminder, we have thirty-two hundred students right now, so just so that our numbers are relative. Uh, and these numbers represent, um, the incidents, um, it doesn't count children as like the devil. So if there was a fight between two children, you don't get two infractions, that's one fight. Alright, so harassment and or intimidation, that is separate from bullying. Um, bullying, as the state identifies it, um, has a, uh, an imbalance of power. And so if there is no imbalance in power, um, if there is not, um, a consistent and persistent effort. Um, to harass that student, it is not, uh, it is not considered bullying, okay, so. This is the number, we have zero, zero, and one reported. Any questions about these numbers before we go to the next one? You're already at eight, okay, alright, give me, look, give me, this is September, so. Alright, so the next month, uh, the next infractions are weapons. Weapon possession, uh, zero the year before, uh, zero twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, zero twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, one this school year, uh, we had a look-alike at the high school, um, for vaping. We had three in twenty-three, twenty-four in September, okay? Um, zero in twenty-four, twenty-five by September, and then, um, by. Uh, September this year, you have five, so yes, this is, this is data that we are aware of. And that, uh, the administrators, um, are addressing and in their discipline committee meetings. Uh, tobacco possession, two, we had one, zero so far this school year. Bullying, uh, we had one in twenty-three, twenty-four, one twenty-four, twenty-five, we have not had any reported. Uh, this school year, uh, one of the things that we do want to make sure that, when we talk with families, that they're letting the building administrators know. And that it's being reported, so that it is documented, um, as you can see, we have any so far this year. That doesn't mean that people are not experiencing it, we just need them to encourage, we need to encourage them to speak to the building administrators. If they have not done that, or they have, and they have not found resolution, absolutely speak to Dr. Martin, because he's the next up, and then, of course, they can always talk to me. Of course, if there is no resolution, I only come and speak to the school.
That's, that's not just in the school, that's on, that could be on school.
It could be on the bus, it could be at an athletic event, yes, yeah.
It's almost like there was a bake store across the street from the school or something.
Right beside the Dunkin', right, yeah.
Conversation with the township.
Yeah, they actually did put some provisions in place at their last meeting to limit the expansion of those stores in the township, the planning commissioners, I will. Give them a, um, shout out.
To your point, the, the state separates, they differentiate between bullying and harassment, and so we have different data numbers for that. Yes, so, and, and you mentioned that bullying, like the, the definition or the title or the parameters of that are consistent and persistent. And I believe that the standards for harassment are severe and pervasive, and so, like, that's some of the difference, like, so. We've got an instance where maybe somebody's flashing the light, or maybe I, you know, push Jackie one time to death, and maybe there's. Maybe there is, or maybe there isn't a, a, a balance of power, and I'm taller, if I'm taller than her, or if I'm bigger than her. Then, okay, maybe it might be considered bullying, but maybe if she knocked, if she could knock me over, then maybe it would be considered bullying, I might still be bullying. But when we're getting to harassment perhaps, and I don't wanna get into, you know, particular, just specifics, but if we've got an incident where this is happening over and over again. Perhaps, like, can you talk about the difference, and it's going from maybe bullying, garden variety bullying. Getting into the more severe, uh, category of harassment and intimidation.
Actually, it's the reverse, it's, based on the state. Based on the state's definition, it's the reverse.
Okay.
Harassment can happen as a single incident, bullying is when it is, is persistent and over time.
I think, yeah, if using the state's standards.
Correct, so then, yes.
Alright, well, thank, thank you, that's helpful to know, though, that bullying is considered more severe at this level, or the way we're measuring bullying versus, versus harassment. It's more serious.
It can be one on one harassment, it can be one on one in time. Any other questions about the numbers, you want me to go back?
It's just because they're gonna stay, or just for this presentation in general?
Well, the ones we're not reporting, we don't have many, and there may not be any infractions at all. You have to report, we don't have any, so. We can assume that there were either zero or one in a period of, of course, I'm like three years, so, yeah.
But they restate, they're still reportable by the state, it's not.
Oh, it's all reportable. And so you can actually go to the state, uh, if you just Google, um, safe schools report Pennsylvania. You can go in and see any school district safe school report for the last ten years or so.
So if it is brought to us, it is recorded, but we can only report it if it's brought to us.
No, no, we report it from the building level, so if there is bullying happening in the building, we report it to the state.
I mean, if we're made aware of it, I'm, I'm saying.
Oh, you mean the awareness administration, yes, yes, oh, yes, yes, yeah.
Correct, if, if someone is complaining of bullying, harassment, that kind of thing, but they never reported it.
Then it doesn't show up in our numbers, that's correct, yeah. Any other questions?
No personal, update, uh, finance committee report?
Good evening. I just have a couple, uh, updates, uh, from the finance department, so we're gonna review our year-to-date budget. Um, we'll talk about, well, well, we won't talk about the state budget adoption, because there is none. And, uh, we'll talk about the twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, Act One adjusted index, and then some results on the bond rating. That we recently have. Oops, too fast, okay, so before I get into the details of this spreadsheet, let me just walk you through what you're looking at. On your left, uh, the red block of information is prior year, so that is your information for twenty-four, twenty-five. And it's comparing it to current year twenty-five, twenty-six, the first column on the right. Um, where it says twenty-four, twenty-five year-to-date, that is from July first through June thirtieth, and so this report. I'm sorry, this is July first through September thirtieth, so this is, this report is showing up until this period last year. The twenty-four, twenty-five annual budget, that is actual, so that is not the budget numbers that you've passed. But what, how we performed in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so that is the final numbers. And then the percentage on that, uh, prior year actual, year-to-date percentage as a part, part of the annual budget. Um, and that's the number that we're really comparing to in twenty-five, twenty-six, that percentage. The block, uh, the blue block is showing you current year, so again, the twenty-five, twenty-six year-to-date. Is showing you July first through September thirtieth, and then the annual budget as we passed it in June. Um, and then again, that year-to-date percentage of budget, okay? Any questions so far? Alright, so we're looking at results on how we're performing, and I thought it would be a good idea to give us a high-level overview. Um, especially since we don't have a state and federal budget, and we're not having that revenue come in. Um, you'll see that on the revenues component, um, when you compare last year at this time, which up until. September thirtieth of twenty-four, we'd received up until that period fifty-eight point eighteen percent of our revenues. Compared to this year, we're at fifty point seven five, and that's primarily because of the state and federal lines not coming in. But the bulk of our revenues really comes from our local sources, so that is real estate tax money, E I T, personal. Uh, per capita tax, all of that, um, is in that local source. And out of that, seventy-four percent makes up real estate, so that is your chunk of money coming out of that local. Source revenue, and then the second biggest is E I T, which is ten point three percent. So just to give you a little highlight, uh, last year at this time, we had collected ninety point five percent. Of our budgeted revenues, this year we're at eighty-eight percent, so not too far, less than three percent, we're comfortable with that. E I T, last year at this time, we collected six point six percent, and, uh, this year we're at six percent. So not too much of a difference, but just wanted to give you an overview of what your revenues looked like. Any questions on revenues? On the expenditure side, um, you'll see. On the expenditure side, um, you'll see that overall, we've, last year at this time, we expended nineteen point sixteen percent of the budget. Um, and this year, we're at fourteen point twenty two percent. Now, one of the biggest differences we want to, uh, point out here is when you're looking at your twenty four twenty five annual budget, remember that those are actuals, not on, uh, adopted budget. And so, you're not really comparing apples to apples, um, on both sides, okay? Um, it's just how the, uh, chart is set up. Projected. Um, you'll see slight increases, um, in each of the object series. Uh, just wanted to make a point that, uh, when you're looking at salary and benefits, remember that there are increases. Do you collect bargain agreements, and the board had passed new positions, and so that is reflected there. So, when you're looking at the projected annual budget compared to the actual twenty four twenty five, you'll see that, 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 that is different. Other objects are things like, um, dues and fees, miscellaneous expenses that are in, doesn't, that they don't fit anywhere else in how PDE has structured the chart of accounting.
Like our PSBA, um.
Those are memberships, yeah?
Send them over to the PSBA conference every year, those things, that's, that's other objects, because there's no line I can put.
So, overall, we believe that we're doing well, this is information that we would have shared, uh, with the bond rating, uh, last week. And so, um, we're, we're doing pretty good, considering that there is no state and federal money. Uh, right now, we are operating basically on that local sources. Um, and we'll probably be likely doing that through the end of December. Um, hopefully, the state and federal impasse will subside. Then we'll dip into our reserves.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so, for, see, you just mentioned the other object, and it's looking at twenty six, and if I'm reading, understanding this, um, we have budgeted in that line item a hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred and fifteen. Or that's what we use so far year-to-date, but then the annual budget for that is two million?
Yes, so last year. Yes, so last year, you had a bond issuance, and so that is recorded in that section.
So, the bond.
Yeah, sometimes when, yeah, right, so when some, when you have those bond issuances, or when you have a refinancing, that is recorded in the eight and nine hundred object series, and so you'll see that fluctuation depending on that. Okay, the next slide just shows you a chart view of the information that we just reviewed. So, again, red columns are twenty four twenty five, your blue columns are twenty five twenty six. So, last month, we talked about, um, how PDE is required to release the Act One index. Act One index by, uh, September first, which they did, they did that at the end of August. However, they are also obligated to release the adjusted Act One index, and that was due by September thirtieth, that has not been done yet. But because PDE gives us that calculation, we were able to estimate that ourselves. And so, I'm showing you here what that calculation is, um, it's based off of, um, our market value, personal income aid ratio, which is just a comparison of how we do in the market value across our jurisdiction in our district, and personal, uh, personal income compared to all the other school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. And so, based on that, we have an adjusted Act One index at four point four percent. That is where we are capped. So, the next slide just shows you what those, uh, what that translates in new money. Um, so if we were to increase taxes by four point four percent, we would generate one point six million in new revenue. Or if we went three point five, we would generate one point three million. And so, these are just for viewing only, does, does not suggest that we're doing one or the other, or either. It's just to let you know what we're allowed to do under the Act One index. The beginning of September, uh, we had PFM and Raymond James come in, um, and one of the questions from Ms. Hill was, uh, the potential interest that we could gain from these bond issuance to twenty twenty five. And so, we have some conservative, very conservative numbers. Uh, you'll see in the third column, uh, the interest earnings, they're projected at three percent, which is less than what we're currently at. But not knowing where the market is going to be, we wanted to make sure that we were conservative. Does that answer your question, Ms.?
How much have we earned?
Uh, six hundred and eighty thousand, potentially.
Just for this coming year?
No, that's throughout the life of this bond. So, you'll see the schedule, the schedule shows you, um, what your beginning balances are. The red is when you draw the money, and so, and then you have your ending balance. So, it's revenue plus interest minus expense, then balance, and you do that throughout.
I thought that we borrowed fourteen million dollars. And for the first three years, we get our interest on that money without spending, right?
Based off of this, we are anticipating using all of that, so we're not.
Using all of what?
All of the funds.
All the funds?
All of the funds.
We get ready to get done fourteen.
And we anticipate using the majority of those funds by next, this time, next year. My apologies, I'm going to correct myself, I'm talking about up until we anticipate spending the money. Because we'll have those funds available to collect interest.
See what I'm thinking, Mama, um, remember the other index you put up about, we can earn, if you had four point two and two point five? Yeah, like the index, and we raised taxes, so I'm looking and saying, well, if I'm minus, what we're going to make over here, I don't have to raise the tax that high, that's what I would want. You don't know what?
No.
No, because you're in, you're generating interest, interest on the monies you have available from the proceeds up until you spend it. So, every time you spend down, you, you're generating less interest. If we anticipate that by January of twenty eighth, all of the funds are expended, then, well, we won't have any money to generate interest on.
Well, we don't use that money, so.
You're taking this money out that you're generating, and you're sitting it over here, it's standing in your account. Constantly earning money, but you're constantly spending that money.
Which is why the interest earnings drop every.
You are earning it.
You know what I'm saying?
It's not something you can take and set it aside, she's saying to you. She is showing you that, it's making money, we're all making money.
So, from off the top, so we borrowed fifteen million, and then we earned thousand six hundred and sixty five dollars in interest, whatever you're saying. Like at the very top, the very top line.
The very top line, so the beginning balance is fifteen million, you would generate thirty seven thousand that first month, right? And then, you're expending that cash, so now you have an ending balance. That ending balance is then carried over to the next month as the beginning balance, and so on and so forth.
I'm looking at, at the very top, like before June of twenty five, before June, because we borrowed the money previously, and it's been sitting for some time, so we had the fifteen million that we borrowed, and that thirty thousand six hundred and sixty five dollars, I'm asking, that was interest that we had been gen- generated prior to June of twenty twenty five?
I'm sorry.
Like last year, like whenever we borrowed the money, which I believe was like more than a year ago with this question.
The last column, ending balance, where it says fifteen million, thirty thousand six hundred and sixty five, thirty thousand six hundred and sixty five dollars.
That's the proceeds from this, from this closing only, so that is the starting point.
You said the proceeds from the closing.
From the twenty twenty five general obligation bonds. Yeah, it's the same number.
Right, I see, I just wondered where, it began at fifteen million dollars, I just wanted to know where the thirty thousand six hundred and sixty five came from. You just said we're going to pay running proceeds and close it, okay, it's unclear now.
So, so what, so, so what I'm, I'm thinking is saying the same thing. So, when we borrowed the money, we started spending it right away, it didn't stay for one year, before we touched it, it did?
No, we're spending it as, as.
Well, I, but, but my understanding was this, we borrowed fourteen million dollars, and we put it in the bank, and we can put, we can make money on it, because we're not using it right away. We could, we had three years to use it. I mean, we can get interest on it three years before we touch it, but apparently, we touch it before three years. It wasn't in there one year, period.
We haven't received it yet.
Fourteen thousand come down here, and you look at. The fourteen million, fourteen million.
We can talk about it.
I understand what you're saying. If you started, if you started spending it right away, you ain't going to get all the interest.
Right, correct, but whatever's in the account. She's showing you, as you spend it, but you're still earning interest, or you spend interest.
What, what are we getting by?
We, we haven't, the bond sale doesn't happen. Oh, this is projected at three percent. The interest rates, just for conservatism. We, we must be conservative, Mr. Ross. It, it could be, so that means that we can, it's just projections.
Yes.
It's taking you to account, the Fed's.
Yes.
Interest rate. So, we have started at four and a half. Bank having that much money on hand, you big deal. You got all my money over there, you only going to give me three percent, well, let's go look at another bank. Well, I'm going to scare them up a little bit, but every, every, that's how they work, they've already talked to each other before they talk to us. The banks, they, no, no bank is going to say, I'm going to give another half point. That much more money than everybody else. Okay, I don't have that much money to deal with, so.
Last slide, um, last week, we received our, uh, credit rating results. Um, and the district, uh, maintains its double A two credit rating, which is outstanding. And so, um, we just wanted to highlight this and congratulate the board, Dr. Willis and Mr. Anderson, for, uh, their hard work and for your support in, uh, ensuring that we maintain a healthy fund balance.
Was that the board, or was that the?
Both the board, well, I said, the board, Dr. Willis and Mr. Anderson. It is a team effort. You, you support.
Five board.
Yes.
I get turned twenty percent of the people's lower work.
I am sure, what, do they give reasons for? Like, do they, do they identify what the, what the risk is when they, uh, provide, so?
So, they have a very, uh, robust criteria grid, um, that they go through. Um, and if you fall within those ranges, that's how they identify whether you're hot risk, medium risk, or, uh, prime. Exactly, some of it is controlled within the district, and some of it is outside of our control, right?
I want to ask a question. The vote check has money that we pay them monthly, plus the bond, whatever. How big of a effect that I have on our budget? Is that a big impact on our budget? Plus, we have to pay them monthly for the, and then we also pay them for the, for the bond that they flow in.
They don't have that number in front of me, but I can get back to you.
I don't know if I should be asking this question here, I, I, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, I would like to give kudos to. I just, I just wanted to give kudos to Mr. Anderson and to, to Dr. Willis and our board, who put together, uh, constitutionally, put together our, our financial reports, and just had made us maintain our fiscal responsibilities, our standards. And we look around, uh, the area, and when other districts are struggling with, um, credit rating and credibility, and misappropriation in management, we remain, uh, you know, with stronger credit filing, and we've got a high rate. And so, uh, our business administration and trust should be thankful for that.
So, you're saying we put pressure on, uh, cabinet to maintain? Okay. Okay, this wireless network, that's the other thing we discussed, and that, anybody have any information on them? I want, so this, this looks like it's, this is the provider for the hardware. Are they also providing the, the, the actual connectivity, or is this just for the hardware stuff? Like, we're not going to the traditional provider like Verizon? Mr. Bishop?
Aldo, for to Mr. Green.
He's online.
Good evening, everyone. So, yes, this is absolutely for, um, just the hardware components. In terms of connectivity for the larger WAN, uh, we're, we're traveling down two different paths. One is a buried fiber connection to Thomas Holtzman, which then we would use their backbone to get back to the high school. But then, as we progress through the implementation of Deerpath, eventually Deerpath will turn into our main server room for the district. And at that point, we would engage Comcast to bring, uh, point-to-point connections to our, to our other buildings. And that would be the primary, the primary, um, center for the district.
Deerpath will?
Yes.
So, you're moving stuff out, is it not to high school?
It is currently, um, Deerpath has a phenomenal server room space that, uh, existed, uh, which is far better equipped than all of our other buildings that have had retrofitted storage closets, uh, et cetera. So, this is definitely, uh, a step up from a technology perspective.
So, you're going, you're going to really enjoy this one, aren't you?
There's going to be a lot of work involved, but yes, absolutely.
Okay, I understand, so you got, you have all the space you need and everything?
Yes, yes, we will.
But that means that we got fast service and all, everything?
Absolutely.
We anticipate, like, do we anticipate any overhead in that bandwidth, like, are there? Um, I don't know if there's other opportunities to negotiate with the provider to, like, lease some, or if there's any, if, if there is overhead, is there an opportunity to, like, lease some of that overhead? Possibly, uh, create a, a revenue, like, create a revenue generating possibility?
So, there's certainly some, um, security issues that we would need to work through with that. Um, and the other thing that we need to consider is bandwidth varies throughout the course of the year. Um, as state testing happens, so we want to make sure that the available bandwidth is available, um, when we need it.
Right, well, yeah, I'm thinking like, I'm not sure how much bandwidth is being used on the weekends, right? So, like, if there's opportunity, if there's opportunities there, I, I would, I would just ask that we, you know, keep an open mind. Um, to be, you know, provided that you can ensure the security of the.
Sure.
Any other question? All right, thank you, Mr. Green. Next up, see. Anything, any questions? This is something new every year, right?
No, this is actually new.
So we're looking for possible to conduct a peer review study, essentially an audit of our facilities department for efficiencies improvements and to ensure that, uh, we're staffed correctly. And if what, if not, then what recommendations they would have for our department?
Anybody with questions?
When does that start? I guess upon a group vote.
Of disagreement.
All right, next one, please.
You'd say a dollar.
Is that it or nothing?
I do have a question. So this consultancy, like what they're gonna do, they're just examining whether or not we need to show staff, like it'll just be doing, like our, our stacking levels and that kind of?
In addition to how our department is operating, so they'll be looking at practices, um, whether or not we are, we have procedures in place for, like, cleaning, um, at standards and things like that. So it's not only in staffing levels, but just how the entire department operates.
And this is just for facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Is, is this a public organization?
No, this is just facilities.
Facilities? Is it public or private?
Yeah, I, I see it's Pennsylvania Association, but is this, is this an agency or is it?
It's a nonprofit. It's FASBO, yeah.
Okay.
It's like, yes, yes, the A, but our business office. Years ago, we had, uh, Halyard come in and do an audit, it's been some years ago. Buildings and grounds.
All of them. Any other discussion? Other than community, uh, adjudication? Is there a motion? Johnson moves.
And Johnson?
Johnson move, Johnson second?
No, Edinburgh. Edinburgh's there.
Oh, Edinburgh, okay. All right. They're moving second. Any discussion?
Yes, without getting into detail, I would just say that I.
Okay, it's good.
There's just, I'm ready.
All right. Uh, roll call.
I have twelve A, adjudication student, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six dash zero zero five.
Is Rafflin? I think we can just say for the record that it was discussed executive session. So it's not, and the board is.
It was discussed, oh, for the record, it was discussed in executive session.
That, I.
That says that down to the bottom down there.
I would like to add that there was their additional information.
No, it was discussed, you can't add anything at all. Roll call, please.
Yes.
There's a question, Ms. Rafflin.
There's a question, Ms. Rattler.
Everything with this situation was discussed in executive session. Student matters, expulsion, whatever, adjudication, we never discussed it in public. We vote on, you can vote it up, vote it up, or vote it down. Mr. Ross, can I, can I throw out my motion? So, we, we're gonna recess for a few minutes in the executive session. Uh, as, uh. Thank you. At nine forty-two. So we had a motion on the floor. Adjudication, students?
Mr. Johnson and then Mr. Edinburgh.
There was a motion at the weekend discussion. Are you keeping the motion on the table?
Yes, the motion is on the table.
Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, the motion that you made and second over here, and we'll enter the roll call. Are we still on the motion? All right, roll call, please.
Item 12A, the adjudication of student 2025-26-005. Mr. Edinburgh. Brenda Moreno.
Yes.
For both.
Yes.
Ms. Satcher.
A country ancient.
Ms. Levalle. Ms. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. S Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Katie Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Rawls.
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, seven-two.
Thank you. Next up, it's, uh, the calendar. Any discussion? You got a copy of it in your folder. If you have any changes you want to make, you can call the secretary, board secretary, and we'll discuss it in the next meeting. And take it with you. All right, and take it with you. Can I get a motion for adjournment? Motion. The movement second, all in favor? Who seconded?
I made the motion.
The second.
All in favor? Polls? All right, have it. Good night.